For the Village of Romeo trustees at 7:00 PM. Should we all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lucero, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Bartholomew, here. Edwards, here. Fowler, yes. Care, here. Parker's absent. Rosso.
Present.
President Poznanski.
Here, and I did receive a text message from trustee Parker that he potentially isn't making it. He's run into some travel issues, so we'll call that an excused absence. Moving on, do we have an approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to table number H on our new business. H.
You want to table it?
Yes, table it for next meeting.
Is there something, is there insufficient?
Well, no, with the lengthy, with the agenda, the length of this agenda, it's a lengthy conversation which we have and will be here past 11 o'clock.
Was there anyone who specifically came for village manager discussion decision tonight? I feel like we at least need to.
I think we should table this agenda. I'm requesting that we table it.
Okay, you're requesting it, so there's a request. Are there any other agenda additions, adjustments?
Is there anything else that would be appropriate to table just out of respect of the timeframe?
Just, just real quick, as procedurally you want to postpone it, table is to push it back to the end of a, to a meeting.
Okay, I'd like to postpone the.
I don't know, at the same time, this is a village meeting, we have village items, we're here to do business. Let's do business. There's people here to hear it and took the time out of their day.
We're going to postpone it.
So if not, we good?
Yeah, I was just suggesting because it is a very long agenda.
It happens sometimes. There's a motion to adjust the agenda with putting H off until next month. Do we have a motion? I mean, are you making a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
Okay, do we have support?
I'll support that.
So there's a motion by Fowler, support by Bartholomew. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
I am also opposed. We have two opposed. Still passive. Okay, so we have an agenda. Moving into the minutes, do we have an approval of minutes for September 15th, 2025?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the September 15th regular meeting, 2025.
Support.
We have a mo, we have a motion by Care, support by Edwards. Do we have any discussion?
I have a couple, just one typo and then a couple of questions. On page three E, letter E, it looks like under ex officio planning, we have a duplicate title there. Trustee Parker, trustee Parker, so we just eliminate one. And then on page four, under 11A, the rule call vote reflects six ayes and one nay, but it says motion fails. So I believe it should say motion carries. Down below, similar thing, 11B, there are seven ayes and no nays, and it says motion fails. So if we could have it adjusted to motion carries. And then under C, it has motion passed, six zero, but there were seven present. So it's either seven zero or you missed a nay.
I will make those amendments. I apologize, like I said before, I have a, sometimes I use a previous minute, so.
Template, yeah.
Yeah, it's a template, so I'll fix that. Is that, is that it, the duplicate of trustee Parker and then the two that say fail but actually pass? Well, the three, the two that passed and then the six zero to be amended to seven zero, is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, I checked my notes, that wastewater purchase was seven zero.
Yeah, that was just, that's my fault with the template.
Do we still carry the motion in the second with the edits?
Support.
Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes with edits?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have none opposed. Okay, moving into our bills. We have bills in the amount of $66,987.76 and $1,291,598.19. Do we have a motion to approve bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented. Support.
I have a motion by Edwards, support by Bartholomew. Do we have discussion?
I just have a question, governmentjobs.com. I'm sorry, on the check register for Village of Romeo, page two. More than three quarters of the way down, there is a governmentjobs.com Inc. for $7,131.10. I'm just curious what that one is.
I can get back to you next month, I don't know, there's a number of things it could be. I'll have to get back to you next month, I'll have to go through that because unfortunately I can't connect to our BSNA here. I don't have a backend to do that, otherwise I'd be able to pull up the vendor code and everything and tell you exactly. So it'd have to be next month that I can let you know. But I'll definitely look into that.
All right, will you just add it to the agenda then for next month, please?
Yeah, I'm thinking if we don't have anything that it's a new vendor, it's something we've done before. Because if it's a new one, remember with our past practice, we now put, we'll put it in there and note that we've entered in a new.
Right.
So it's something we've done before. Because I don't see anything in here noting a new vendor.
Yeah, I mean, it is a large expend detergent app. Be aware of what it is, $7,000. Okay, next month, thank you.
Any other discussion for bills? Okay, we had a motion by Edwards, support by Bartholomew. Could you please call the roll, clerk Lucero?
Yes. Rosso?
No.
Care?
Yes.
Fowler?
No.
Edwards?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes. If you follow after the bills, you then have your interest statement from the treasurer in here. And then we move into our presentations. We will start here with our DDA presentation, Ms. Kay.
Hello, Kay Poacher with the Romeo DDA. We have a game to catch, so I'm going to keep it brief. Okay. It's been a busy summer, working on grant applications for SEMCOG and MDOT for our wayfinding and attraction strategy. We recently held a walking tour with grant writers from four counties' community foundation and onboarded our new RA, Romeo High School marketing intern. We launched our Return to Romeo campaign, and I'm going to play that video for you guys in case anybody missed it because it's really good. Part of the attraction strategy that Crimson and U of M came up with was creating our story and our brand for downtown. And our story is called Return to Romeo. So that was our kickoff video, and we are going to be using that same story throughout our marketing campaigns, our events, everything going forward to attract visitors to downtown Romeo. This video in particular received over 30,000 views. So other videos that we've done in the past that have gone viral were three and four thousand views. So to have 30,000 views on this tells us that we have a good story and people like it. So looking forward to expanding on that. I don't know if you've noticed, but it's looking a lot like fall outside, even though it doesn't feel like it. So we did get our fall decor put up, Sean at Dan's Valley and Tom at Justco's did an amazing job. It looks beautiful. We did complete the Village Park Cleanup Project, so that was just new mulch weeding, replacing the rose bushes with more manageable shrub, shrubbery, so that was completed. We did complete our meetings with One Source brochure. We're working on layouts and content that, the distribution reach for that is 17,000 residents from Washington, Romeo and Rose Township. The first edition will arrive in homes by the first week of December. We also did an RFQ for holiday lighting installation. We received four quotes. We're going with Hayward Lighting again, so we're actually going to be filming them this time with their little alf outfits on and make it a whole thing. The DDA established and approved an investment policy, and we opened an investment account with Michigan Class just to make our money work harder. And then we're working on some micro projects for downtown for the next couple of years. Some of the discovery that we're working on is downtown permanent holiday lighting, Village Park playscape and historical walking tour. So those are things we're just vetting out to see if there's an interest. Other than that, summer has been really, really busy with events. So with the support and promotion of the DDA, the downtown events have been the sidewalk sale, Vintage Fest, Peach Fest, a summer networking for our businesses, Golden Girls Day Out, Cruze in Maine, the Art and Wine Walk, which was the best it's ever been. I don't know if any of you got to attend it, but there were lines down the street. For the first time ever, the DDA hosted our own event in our office space. We had an open house. So we were able to greet about 150 visitors and go over, you know, give them a sneak peek of our projects for downtown, welcome them and let them know what our mission is at the DDA. So that was really fun. Next up is our Monsters on Main. It's running all of, all of October. We've received over 400 votes from the community on the best storefront decor, so that's fun. And then we have our Witches and Warlock Return to Romeo this Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00. Again, we wanted a way to draw the crowds that are already coming to Tilson to Main Street. Have them spend the afternoon, shop, eat at our restaurants, so that is scheduled from 1:00 to 5:00. Several of our downtown businesses took on the planning and organization of this event. It's drawn a lot of media attention and visitors are planning to come from all over the state. I personally have had calls of people that have heard it on national radio, which is crazy. I don't know how that happened. Macomb County is a proud supporter. Mark Hackel is going to come and MC the event. Other civic organizations such as the Rotary Club of Romeo and the Northern Macomb Chamber of Commerce are also participating. And the Parks and Rec are moving their costume contest from Village Park to Main Street. So in the planning and marketing of this event, the DDA was proud to get out there, you know, tell the story. We were featured in Macomb Daily, Macomb Now Magazine, Media News Group and Detroit News. Again, just hearing from people all over the state. We have hundreds of people pre-registered and we look forward to making history. Once again, the DDA office will open our office for media and public officials during that event just to continue the conversation on what we're doing in Romeo, our projects and the good stuff we're working on. With that said, I do want to acknowledge I had a respectful conversation with Impact Church this past Thursday. They have plans to hold a prayer and worship service during the events as well. I encouraged them. I thought that was awesome that they're having a faith-based program at the same time. We did talk about next year's events and maybe possibly doing more of an autumn theme to make everyone happy. But I'm excited because it was an opportunity to talk about a true partnership on how we can serve the community better and work on things in the coming months. So with that, that's what the DDA is up to.
Thank you, Kay. Okay, next we have our tree board presentation.
Hi, I'm George Smith and from Romeo here, chairman of the Romeo Tree Board. I know most of yous, but how you doing? What we've done in the past year is, the tree board last year applied for a grant through the Inflation Reduction Act Urban and Community Forestry Grant Program. We received this for $29,000. It paid for the assessment of the trees in the village, 1,114 trees. A software training which we went through on September 23rd on how to use all our data and a five-year maintenance strategy. Out of these 1,100 trees we evaluated, they used a track method, which is a tree risk assessment qualification rating. An example of that might be a tree has a high track, you know, poor condition, high rate, it's going to fail, it's going to fall, but it have, causing damage might be low. In other words, a good example, if it's out in the middle of the field, it's going to fall. Is it going to cause any damage to anybody? No. If something may have a lower track rating, but keep an eye on it, they recommend discretionary, but it's in power lines and some of that, just keep an eye on it. So there's so many ways of slicing dices data. Out of this, 120 trees are recommended for removal in the village. 28 are in the cemetery and 92 throughout the village. So I'm going through this data right now. Some of these trees, yes, they are in poor condition. Sisson Street is one, that one is, we got some quotes out for that one that's hollow. And if that falls across Sisson Street, it will take out some lines. And within the last year, we did, you know, 205 Church Street, some pruning, 131 Tilson Street removal. That was just before Halloween. That tree, when they started taking it down, it was hollow on the inside. So that was a huge risk. And 178 Washington Street, we repaired it. It's probably, it's a pin oak? I don't remember exactly what oak, oak tree it is, but we repaired it. It's probably about 150 years old. So that was one, you know, we wanted to, hey, we saved it. Pleasant Street, we did some pruning and repair. And 118 Michelle Street, a removal. Also the tree, the Christmas tree in the village park using a lack of a better term, a root cleaning procedure to improve growth. We saw about three inches of new growth on this tree. Still in poor condition on one side. There's some ideas on how to replace it or build it up and maybe, you know, keep an eye on this thing, help it along. We have some quotes right now for the pruning of trees at 492 Haber, 329 Prospect and removal of trees at 193 Church, 280 Fair Grove, 240 Sisson. And so that one is, those quotes, we're going to review those through the tree board and we're going to work on that very soon, getting those taken care of. We received quotes for care of the trees in the downtown area. And also we're working with, we're looking forward to work with people from the DDA, cemetery and others with advice, you know, when we remove trees, what to replace them with. Questions have been asked also of me whenever I go talk to people, because I've got a list of people in the village who have called. I go talk to them, tell them what's going on, and they ask questions. If it comes down in easement, can they plant in the easement? We go back and forth on that. But I've asked that through our bris and they say yes. You can plant the easement as long as it's a correct tree. It doesn't grow too tall. There are plenty of trees, 20-foot canopy, that's it. You plant 25 feet away from power lines, we're good. I don't think we should be afraid to look at that idea. I mean, because, and what I did, I gave everybody a perfect example. Let's see, you have a copy of this? What you're seeing is all of Romeo. All the green dots are the trees. This doesn't tell you if they're good or bad, this is all the trees that have been evaluated. The blue dots are areas that are prime for planting, so we have a lot of opportunity. So what I picked, because we, excuse me, we got a call the other day from right in front of the museum on Church Street. When they first raided this tree back in May, poor condition, it split, but nothing was coming down. Well, just the other day, they called again, and yes, this tree has got a broken branch. So I got to call in to get that one removed. And even that's that second page, you can see how, what I can do, I can pick, with this data, I can pick any dot on this map on the computer, zoom in on it, click on it, it tells me the species, you know, what the rating is, what the requirement, pruning, removal, care, you know, so we got a lot of work ahead of us. You know, out of 1,114 trees, pruning and removal, that's, we're going to be busy. You know, we've got six members, we're looking for a seventh member, you know, to be on the board. We're going to be busy. This last page is an example of how they rate it. There's a lot of data on here. Basically what they look at is multi-stem. It's usually kind of dangerous, especially on some of the big maples, because they split, you know, about waist-high like this. They tend to, they will fall, excuse me. This one in front of the library, I'm sorry, the museum, it says here, tree maintenance discretionary. Well, that changed because discretionary, we can't really predict what's going to happen. And sure enough, a branch broke, so we're working on that. You see items here like DBH, that's diameter at breast height. They literally measured the diameter of the tree about this high, and this one's 15 inches in diameter. There's so much data here. I'm still learning how to go through it all. And there's a lot. So, and so bear with us, you probably see, you know, trucks moving around. I hope we're not going to take out too many of them. I want to repair a lot of them, so. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you, George. This was well needed for the community.
Quick question, both 32 and Maine, because closer to the downtown area, well, everywhere, those are county roads, so are the easement trees still ones that we can work with or would the county be responsible?
If they're on county property, no. We don't look at those. And those should be taken. I looked at the data, I think there was a word taken out of here. It's just hard to tell with this small map, once you zoom in on them. There, you know, this, what I'm impressed about is there's so many places, these blue dots, to plant trees. Hey, we can make Romeo a little bit greener.
When it comes, when it does come to easement planning, planting though, we do have ordinance language to that. So even though DT or whoever might suggest that you can, think of whatever the lines above. We have infrastructure below that we don't see and that those roots grow into. So part of the apprehension and planting in an easement, it's not just what's above, it's what's below and the amount of money to dig up and fix when things get ruined. So that, that's just consideration.
Yeah, that's what was asking me and I'm going, I'm all against that. You know, I don't want to run and have people digging their own holes and run into a power line or anything. But if Ms. Dig comes out and says, hey, we got, you can plant a lilac, they call it white silk lilac. It grows about 20 feet high and it's gorgeous. And the root system's not humongous. That's just one example.
Yeah, and it's also about visibility and safety. So think of, on our sidewalks, our children on their bikes and the people walking. Depending on bush, you're going to, there's a screen and we don't want that. We want you to see. So it does, it depends on what it is we're talking about.
Yeah, I'd like to be able, as these come up, I'd like residents to, you know, be able to pick the tree too. Hey, if we can, if you've got approval to go there, let's do it. You pick out the tree. Just an idea.
Yeah, no, I think it's all worth discussion and consideration of all the points, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and then lastly, HRC, you are up. I did have it printed here for everybody on the council, if you can't see the screen here.
Where is it, chairman? All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Yuranga. I'm with Hubbell Roth &amp; Clark. With me is Tyler Posen, also with Hubbell Roth &amp; Clark. We're pinch hitting tonight for Karen Stickle, who some of you are probably more familiar with. She's in Italy tonight, so not watching the Lions. But we're here to give hopefully a brief presentation on the water and sewer improvement projects and answer any questions that the village may have. These are going to come up later in the agenda as items 11A and B. So just as a quick overview of what I'm here to talk about, it's water and sewer projects that were identified under several previous studies, starting in 2018 with the Saw Grant, moving on to 2019 with the Water Asset Management Plant, and then most recently with the SEMCOG Planning Grant Study that was kind of authored in 2024 and submitted in early '25. Water and sewer rates have been approved to address approximately $2 million water main and water system investment and a $4 million sanitary sewer investment to be paid for out of bond funding. HRC has worked with village staff to identify specific projects to fit in under those two buckets, and we've provided proposals for design. Again, those are going to come up under new business 11A and B. On the drinking water side, the $2 million in water system improvements has been spread over four different project types. There's water main replacement totaling about $1 million. Maintenance upgrades at the village's iron removal plant totaling about $150,000. Maintenance improvements at the associated well field that feeds the iron removal plant totaling about $315,000. And then the remainder of that $2 million is earmarked for improvements to the village's water tower. As far as the water main replacement project, the two that have been identified for this are Benjamin Street from Bradley to Village Limits, and that would be an eight-inch open cut replacement, meaning it'll get dug up and relayed. And then Church Street from Chandler to Prospect is proposed as an eight-inch trenchless replacement. So just digging it up at the two ends, but then using trenchless technology to replace the water main. At the iron removal plant, we did a condition assessment in September of 2024, walked through the plant with Tim Matts, and the findings of that are included in the SEMCOG Planning Grant. Specific to the iron removal plant, there's a list of kind of smaller improvements, but that total up to about $150,000. Installation of emergency lighting, performing maintenance on the distribution and lighting electrical panels, upgrading the programmable logic controller that is kind of the brain that operates the iron removal plant, replacing the building roof and the gutters on the water plant with a long-lasting metal roofing system. Trying to get somewhere between 30 and 50 years out of that roofing system by going with the more premium option than just standard asphalt shingles. And then some exterior improvements to re-cock and re-glaze doors, they're kind of thermal efficiency things. And then some cleaning of some staining on the side of the building. And then probably the biggest piece. And then probably the biggest piece under this is a proposed new power equipment maintenance building. It's really more of a pole barn, but to park the backhoe in and provide the ability to do work on that in the winter. So moving on to the other piece at the plant are the wellhouses. Again, these were evaluated a couple of times, but most recently in September of last year. And at wellhouses three, five, and six, some improvements are proposed. At wellhouse number three, again, installing emergency lighting inside of the wellhouse, replacing the building roof, which right now is asphalt shingles at the end of their service life, again, with a metal roofing system. Some concrete repair around the walkway at wellhouse number three, an exhaust fan upgrade, some unit masonry repair, which is brick repair, tuck pointing, and addressing some cracks from settlement. And then doing an electrical upgrade to replace the distribution panel, the transformer and the lighting panel within wellhouse number three, and then also replacing the variable frequency drive that controls the motor for well number three. Similar set of improvements at wellhouse number five with electrical improvements to replace the distribution panel, the transformer, and the panel board, install emergency lighting again within the wellhouse, also replace the existing asphalt shingles with a more premium, long-lasting roof system, doing some concrete repair and coating on the floor slab, and then also replacing the variable frequency drive that drives the motor for the well. Wellhouse number six is a little different. That's the newest well, but it's currently housed, the picture at the upper right, in a wooden lean-to shed that Tim's staff put together. It's kind of a temporary measure to protect the well motor and the pump. But the proposal there is to upgrade that to a masonry structure that will last quite a bit longer and provide better protection, also allow lighting to be put in there, and some electrical improvements to have the electrical actually inside a formal building. And then the water tower, this piece is outside of what HRC is proposing for scope. But Dixon Engineering, that specializes in water tower rehab, has a set of recommended improvements. They're listed here on the exterior. And then a future piece would be repainting the interior, but really just to clean up and extend the lifespan of that existing steel water tower. On the wastewater side, the village's wastewater system needs include both wastewater treatment plant. I'm sorry?
No, I said, go back to page for everybody here, like in front of them, it's on page three.
There's needs, long-term, for improvements at both the wastewater treatment plant and also in the sanitary sewer for some rehabilitation. Our proposal assumes, though, that the entire $4 million in bond funding will be allocated to the wastewater plant. And the thought there is that that sort of bucket of money does not come along that frequently for a wastewater plant, and there are other mechanisms to address sewer rehabilitation that can be handled separately from this current bond fund. But as far as the wastewater treatment plant, we've developed, in conjunction with talking with Al LaPierre and looking at the plant for the last half-decade, a group of electrical improvements, so replacing the main electrical transformer that feeds the plant, replacing a primary electrical switch that allows switching between primary and backup power, replacing motor starter panels throughout the plant. Those are the things that drive the various motors throughout the plant. And the actual panels are going on 45 years old, and it's very difficult to source new starters when the existing ones fail. So it's at the point where Al has been having to look on eBay to find replacement parts, and we want to kind of get out of that cycle of having to hunt all over the place and put in some upgraded units that are, you know, going to be restarting their service life. There's also a tertiary filter backwash electrical improvement to allow under generator power running multiple tertiary backwash pumps, not being limited to one, the way the electrical is wired currently. And then also some other improvements at the headworks to replace the existing screening system that handles the larger debris coming into the plant. And then on the digester side, two improvements. One is a safety improvement to replace the digester gas monitoring equipment that automatically alerts plant staff to a potentially hazardous atmosphere if there's a methane leak out of the digester. Also to replace the primary digester membrane cover, which is at its end of service life. And then along with that, some concrete rehabilitation at both the primary clarifiers and the final clarifier tanks. And then finally, two kind of global improvements. One, to replace the wastewater treatment plant administration building roof, and also to do some resurfacing of the wastewater treatment plant driveway. The existing surface is pretty torn up from having trucks in and out of there over the several decades that the plant's been in service. And the total of that, our estimate at this point is just under that $4 million. We're at $3,950,000 for the list of improvements on this page. And with that, I open it up to any questions.
I do thank you. I mean, this isn't our first time, so probably all of our questions might have been.
Yeah, I know that I'm kind of here at the tail end of this, when this has been, not studied to depth, but studied pretty, in pretty good detail and talked about at multiple meetings, so.
We're all good?
This is just your rough estimate of the, of the cost, of what it's going to cost, basically, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's more than a conceptual level estimate. It's more of a preliminary estimate. And we do have a contingency in there, you know, for unknowns. But we're, we know that we've got $2 million to work with on the water side and four on the wastewater side. So typically, if there are things that are looking like aren't going to fit within the estimate, we would treat the projects as kind of a à la carte, and we pick the ones that are the highest priority to fit within the budget.
And as far as trying to get the best price for, or big spending for the bucks on things, like your metal roofs you want to redo on the places, would you like to go out to local companies and get their bids as opposed to just somebody with your organization?
No, what we would do on those is we'll write a performance spec and we'll list several manufacturers. And then, so they're still competitively bidding products on the roof, but we would want to have some inputs. It's not just going to be any roofing company in any system. We're going to have a performance specification written that dictates what we want to see in terms of minimum metal thickness, finish, insulation, things of that nature. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have correspondence. I did not receive any this month. And then into our public comment, now is the time of your first public comment. You have three minutes to speak at the podium on any item that you wish.
Hello, Ruth.
I will give you, just, I'll give you like a 30-second heads-up when it comes closer.
I'm Ruth Heidebrecht, 354 Salem Drive, South Romeo, Michigan. Haven't been here in a while, but I've been watching the meetings and the amount of people that are coming out of the woodwork to try to help the village park. The village park is our central piece, our centerpiece. And when we were working on the park and creating a state-of-the-art water system, state-of-the-art sound system, state-of-the-art pavilion, the board was all concerned that that park wasn't going to be theirs again. You took our park. We're not going to get it back again. Well, we did a very quick project, 18 months, and created a beautiful centerpiece for this village. Not for the board, but for the people of the village. That's their park. And they have been coming up here and telling you how unhappy they are to see that that park has not had any love, any care whatsoever. The littlest you could do is go to your iPad that sits on either the clerk's desk or it's somewhere in your village offices, and turn on the water. Because you've just now had another group, and I know that the tree board has offered also, if there's a bare minimum that you want to do for that park, water it. And you guys refuse to water it. You just have to push a button on an iPad, and you could just water what you wanted to water. You could just maybe water our Christmas tree, so we don't lose that this year. It's such disrespect for the community to watch that park deteriorate. And it looks terrible. The DDA had to spend money and time just to pull weeds out and then pull out $50 apiece roses that were planted in there when we created there, when we created the park. And there's a rose, there's a watering, state-of-the-art watering channel that goes underneath.
30 seconds.
Yeah. If you have respect for this village and you are the caretakers of this village, something should be done. And if you can't, we will pay for the water. We will find a way to pay for the water. Friends of the Park, DDA, Tree Board will pay for the water. If that's your only excuse, that's done. We agreed to do that. And we would like to see the water on now, so we don't lose our Christmas tree. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment?
Zach Throne, 166 Benjamin Street. In regards to the village manager discussion and decision, I guess questions that I would like to see answered when talking about this item is addressing whether or not the day-to-day operations are getting done at the village office? And if it's not getting done, why is that taking place? And then how does this align with the responsibilities of day-to-day operations and executions that the village president is responsible for, and how that roles would be delineated? I think those are just some really big questions that need to be asked if trying to identify different roles. And then just a couple other thoughts. In regards to the short-term rental ordinance that's brought to the table today, you know, living here in the village, I've never heard of a poor experience with short-term rentals that we commonly think of larger municipalities. I'm thinking, why cut opportunity for the village to be in an, to be an economical beneficiary, you know, of the short-term rentals? Just a thought. And then lastly, this grant writer proposal is a phenomenal creative solution to address the multi-faceted financial gap that this village is facing. It's a no-brainer, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Any more public comment?
Sharon Smith, 377 North Main. I just wanted to echo Ruth's request to please take ownership of our park. Turn on this damn water. You know, fix the dammer. Turn on the water, please. And then for the short-term rentals, I just wanted to make it, or put this on your radar. And there was a speaker at the Methodist Church last year who was talking about human trafficking, sex trafficking, and how across the United States, short-term rentals are providing the perfect opportunity for sex traffickers to go in, rent someplace. The nice people who have this short-term rental have no idea who they're renting to, and they don't realize what's going on until maybe a couple of days into it. By then, they've moved on. There has been an instance of sex trafficking on the radar in the state of Michigan, in Romeo, all over the state, but also in Romeo. So please just keep that in mind. It's a reality.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
Andrea St. Lawrence, 170 Pleasant. I don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to kind of respond to the short-term rental. I spoke at the Planning Commission meeting several months ago, and there was some discussion about bed and breakfast in the area. And I respectfully disagree with Sharon on her take on human trafficking. In my career, I am certified twice a year in the identification and stopping of human trafficking throughout the state of Michigan, especially in border communities like Port Huron and Detroit. And for a lot of reasons, which I can't get through in three minutes, Romeo, while it can happen anywhere, is not the typical type of place where this is going to happen. And I'd be happy to speak on that at another point if the board wanted to discuss that more. But we are trained twice a year by the FBI, as well as all Border Patrol, on human trafficking. And I just don't want that to be a reason that this board decides not to make that decision. If the board is interested in more communication or education through the human trafficking and Stop Human Trafficking website and program, I'd be happy to provide that documentation for you, just so you can make an educated decision on why you may vote for or against it. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Okay, we will continue on in our officer reports. We do not have chief here tonight. We also do not have our ex-official for the Planning Commission. Let's move into our trustees. Trustee Bartholomew, do you have a report?
Nothing at this time.
Trustee Edwards?
No, I don't have a report, but I would like to comment on the two presentations by the DDA and the Tree Board. I was very impressed by what they had to say. I thought they were very positive and very, much looking forward and very creative. So thank you for your, what you guys are doing.
It's good to hear the collaboration going on.
Yeah.
Trustee Russell?
Just to echo Matt, I was going to thank them for their presentations. It's nice to hear what the other groups in the village are doing and seeing faces and hearing it live instead of getting reports on paper. So that was very appreciated. The ZBA did meet this month. There were two items on the agenda, ZBA's zoning board of appeals. There were two items on the agenda. The first item was a housing development being proposed on Washington Street. And it would be multifamily. Not sure yet if they want condos, townhouses, apartment rentals. But it was approximately eight units, and the developer is working hard to make some nice affordable housing in that area. Their request was approximately 61% decrease in the setback from the road, and that was granted. And so he's on his way to planning. The other one was the former market, which is now a photography studio up on Bailey and Gates. It's a single-person photography studio. It is zoned residential. They're asking, they have a non-conforming use. They're asking to change that non-conforming use from the photograph studio to a wellness clinic, which would contain two offices, a yoga studio, and IV therapy. And that was granted as well. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Kerr?
Yeah, nothing major. I just wanted to say that the police and DPW are doing a really good job with the increased foot traffic and keeping the garbage off the road. Just make sure everyone's driving slow out there, because there's a lot of people crossing it at places they shouldn't cross. So thanks to everyone there. That's it.
Trustee Fowler?
And nothing at this time.
Clerk Lucero?
So, not much. We, oops, not much. Real quick, if I could go back. I was able to look at that line item, trustee Rosso. They changed the name of the company. It was NeoGov. That is the company, the state-compliant company that handles all police policy. So that's the policy portal for our police department.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We received our computers. We're almost fully up and running that way within the village. This last month, I have tackled the monumental task of recoding our code of ordinance. This last month, I have tackled the monumental task of recoding our code of ordinances so that it flows a little bit better. That the old ordinances that should have been taken off were taken off. I'm pretty much there. There's a few ordinances that we have to. Before I reprint our code of ordinances, I want to make sure we get through the ordinances at the table here. So then I'm not trying to do something mandatory or anything. I can just print it and it's done, get it to everybody who needs them. And that's really it for what I got. Anything else I have to talk about will be done at newbusiness eleven E. So that's it for me.
Okay, for the president report. Just want to update on our Eagle lead line verifications. To date, we have submitted about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which leaves us two hundred and twenty thousand because we have about three sixty there in grant dollars. And then also, this one was a plus. We were able to apply fourteen thousand dollars, just over fourteen thousand dollars of DPW wages that they have done over, all the way back to, I think it was a portion of twenty-three, when they did line verification. So we've been able to lift a little bit there with the grant and wages reimbursement. So that was a, you know, unknown plus for us. Also, it's that time of year where we have the MIT TV contract true-up and in true form, we have an overpayment again. So we will be going forward with that. We have our tree grant. I have submitted those, what we've, the work we've done so far for reimbursement. They said I did it correctly, so we should get a check back to the village soon. And then also, here is an update on our boards and commissions. I would like to say thank you to Brian Mitten. He has been on our planning commission and ZBA and is moving out of the village or has technically moved out of the village. So at that time, he cannot be on the ZBA but can still sit on the planning commission. And he does wish to no longer do that, and he will sit there until we find a replacement though. So that leaves us with an opening on our planning commission, our zoning board of appeals, and we still have a DDA seat open. So if anyone would like to volunteer, oh, and Tree Board too. We still have one on Tree Board. So if anybody would like to, we have a letter of interest form at the village hall. You pick it up, you fill it out, you drop it off, you email it in, whatever it is, for consideration. And then just some things happening around town. We have our downtown merchant trick-or-treat that is this Saturday from eleven to one. That happens right before the witches and warlocks take off from one to five. Please join us. We are trying to break the world record there. And then also, want to talk about the Romeo Masons. Their eleventh annual haunted lodge, which is the, this week, the twenty-third to the twenty-sixth, Thursday and Friday, they're open seven to ten. Saturday and Sunday, they are open six to ten. And Saturday during the witches and warlocks, they're open just a little bit from one to four there. And it's cash only at the Dorf, adults ten, kids five. And then just something that hasn't been mentioned in a while, the library, the story walk. The collaboration between the DDA and the library. They have a cute little Halloween book in the, a few different business windows. You walk downtown, you read the story as you go around town. So that's just something that's free for families to meander around the village. So there we are with our reports. Let us move on. Committee reports. I don't have anything for ethics. I'm going to assume nothing for sewer. And with that, I say we have continued with nothing moving in these subcommittees for multiple months in a row. I'd like the council to consider, what are we doing with these? And do we want to continue to with them?
I guess I'd like to hold the sewer committee open. I think Justin and I, you know, it's tough getting time with Bruce Township and things like that, but when the opportunity comes up, I'd like to be able to react.
Okay. Do you guys want to keep our ethics going?
Yeah, no, it isn't continuing. There's no excuses.
Okay, I just, it's been multiple months. We haven't moved on any front, and so I just question where we're at. We'll keep them there, we'll keep, hold our spots. Moving into new business. First, we have our sanitary and waste, or hold on, unfinished, I apologize. Our council purchasing policy. This was brought last month. We postponed it to this month. We had discussion. We had discussed potentially, if anyone had some edits, they would send an email. I received nothing from the board, but I still threw it in here because we said we wanted to see it again. So discussion, the floor is open.
Fortunately, Justin, I think, was the one that had the most issues with that. He's not here.
I had some, like when I went through it, a couple of ideas and thoughts, just reading through it. If you just sit back and look at it and go, okay, is this clear? Could anybody pick this up and go from here? And the couple of things I came up with were potentially under number six and seven. When it talks about supplies, you know, equipment, ten thousand dollars. I'm wondering if we want to, in case of an emergency, designate, because it doesn't designate who makes that decision or how many people can, if we want to designate, like, not by name, but by title, two different positions and they consult, instead of one person unilaterally making a decision. Because it doesn't say one or two, it just says that one. So I'm thinking maybe that might be something that would be good to people. The other one was under six, where it says ten thousand dollars will be made from quotes submitted to the village. If we added from two comparable quotes, because I know that's been a conversation that people have had up here, is that they don't compare to each other, so it's hard to decide. So that seemed to be something that stood out to me. And then on number nine, the very first sentence, under emergency purchase. It says emergencies almost always occur as a result of a shortage of materials and tools needed to repair equipment that must remain running. It's an opinion statement. It doesn't lead into the rest of the paragraph or the policy. It seems like it's something not necessarily needed. Those are the things I noticed.
Yeah, I agree with that last one as well. I also think in there, you know, regarding emergency purchases, maybe we could, I don't know, I guess if that line's trying to accomplish anything, maybe it's just trying to define an emergency as that's an acceptable situation or, you know, or type of an emergency. Maybe we could be a little more clear in that, in that paragraph, that they have the authority to do whatever it takes to stabilize the situation. That doesn't mean they can just continue with the project in its entirety because there's a material shortage. Maybe that second paragraph in that same section, the village clerk must be notified as soon as possible. Maybe we could specify within forty-eight hours of that emergency purchase or something a little more specific.
Under that same thought process, Nolan, what about adding like, once it's stabilized, then calling an emergency meeting if necessary? Because if there's something that's that urgent that needs to get taken care of, it would be nice for the board to know about it. And then we can go from there once it's stabilized.
Well, isn't that, I think it's in there somewhere else that it has to be then ratified by the board, doesn't it?
After the fact later. It doesn't say like during the crisis or whatever.
Right.
Yeah, a good example would be this Fourth of July. We had a water main break down the road. Water everywhere. It's literally the fifth of July. I remember if it was the day before the day. I feel like it was the day after. Anyways. So yes, that is an emergency, needs to be taken care of, did the work, got it all taken care of. And you saw it on your bills, and then we ratify and take care of it. Any work going forward from there, because we still do have to fix road, there's a few other things, nothing has been done. The emergency was staving off the water and making sure that the people on that street now had water.
Right.
Can I ask a question? The previous month, trustee Rosso, you even touched on this. Are you guys good with the amounts? Because this was written in ninety-six and since then, these amounts are at least double. I think it's a multiple of two point zero five since ninety-six. And when we're talking about purchases, even with wastewater, we've seen it, wastewater come in, we've seen DPW come in. And really, it kind of hinders the progress of projects they're trying to do. Cost of goods has gone up considerably. And I'm just asking, as someone who oversees the checks going out and seeing when things need to happen, that you guys maybe consider that as well, the fact that ninety-six dollars do not equate to twenty, twenty-five dollars in purchasing power?
Yeah, I think that's a bare minimum for this. I mean, that should be a pretty easy calculation to find.
Is it a factor of two?
It's about, it's about two point zero five. I think when you were talking about the ten thousand, I think I looked at it and it was, for, what number is that? I turned off my mic, sorry. Seven, number seven, that would, in today's dollars, be like twenty thousand five hundred, twenty thousand six hundred. And I'm not even saying go up to there, but possibly looking at increases just given how much inflation, how much inflation has happened since ninety-six. We're rolling at about a steady three to three point two five over the last twenty years. So it'd be something to consider.
I would definitely want to consider that because it's just, twenty's lost sense.
Yeah, I think you brought that last time.
Yep.
Another note I had in number seven, kind of on the same theme of just maybe better defining some of these terms. Except when deemed impractical or inappropriate by a majority vote of the village board. I mean, in a lot of these situations, wouldn't the department head maybe be the one trying to justify if it's impractical or inappropriate? And not only that, but maybe that should be a more of a super majority vote, because then we can just bypass the proper procedure by just simply outnumbering four to three because we don't want to go through those proper channels. I just think there's a little more checks and balances with, to be had with deeming if something's inappropriate or impractical.
Yeah, I agree, because it's subjective again. Sometimes, not always, but sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, maybe if there was written justification by the department head of, hey, this is our only option, this is the best way to do it. Then, you know, that makes sense. But it seems like it's written that we're the ones deeming it inappropriate or impractical. Maybe I'm just misreading that, but.
I think it's, it still leads into the person who's presenting needs to make that case to you guys. But you guys are, it's at your discretion to authorize and it's what do you deem the practicality or appropriateness of something. I think, I don't know, for me, I'm not an attorney, but I would like that in there if I were you guys. I guess that's something you guys have to consider. But I think that's the spirit of that, if we're talking about it, is based on when someone is making the argument or the case to you guys, you guys have an out to decide if you want to be hard-lined or not.
Yeah.
I think before we get going too far here, I think that we ought to, we go ahead and double, I think, the monies and things like that. But I think I'd like to, the correct term is postponed. Postpone this till next month when Justin can put his two cents worth into this. Because I think he had some of the more involved questions.
And if you guys could send me these suggestions, I'll make sure to highlight them.
Okay.
Bring back an item with all of the adjustments highlighted.
Yep.
To continue to work off that.
Do we need a motion to postpone?
Sure.
Motion to postpone?
We have a motion by Care, support by Fowler to postpone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any opposed? None opposed. Okay, moving into our CBD pileup. Trustee Russell, you have the floor?
I did. This was brought to us recently by our planning consultant. And we all kind of looked at it and thought, oh, it seems okay. And then I went back and reread it, and I think we just left it undetermined or unaddressed.
No, we came back the next month and we did say we were fine with it.
Oh, good. Was I not hearing anything? I don't know. I missed one. Okay. So we're, because my concern, once revisiting it, was, and brings us to what her point was. In section forty-six, it does say any use in the CBD district required to provide off-street parking. And her concern was, it doesn't specify residential versus business. So.
What happened was we had, the first time really that we at least of that are in the office knew of, somebody putting in residential in CBD and they came in to utilize pileup at that time, the summer. And that's when we started looking at it going, does this apply? Does it not apply? We had the discussion at the table. We said, there is a world where both can live. Do we want that though? They can purchase that. However, they purchase it with the understanding that they're not actually getting a spot and they still cannot park overnight anywhere where it's not designated. All that purchase did was allow them to have that residential. We all thought about it, came back the next month and all said we were good with it. Now I feel like we're faced with a bigger issue, seeing it on a grander scale. Tried to, I mean, talk about it earlier this year and, whatever you guys want.
And if I can echo our pony, piggyback off of the president, just to remind you guys, there was one business that was seeking one space for a residential. And at the time, the board discussed, well, pileup means, we talk about business, but then rental is a business. But nobody thought it would get into the problem that we're now faced with where you're talking about forty-seven percent of a development. They're not going to meet forty-seven percent of the parking requirement. And they're arguing to utilize pileup. So.
Was it, was that your point, Megan, when you said grand scale? You're still looking up.
Yeah, we have a proposal. They haven't come in yet, but there's potential there. It brings it a little bit more to the forefront, not just asking for one or two spaces. Was there anything else regarding it that you wanted to address?
No, I just really think the any part, we need, if we want to designate business and residential or just business and residential has to have the parking they need. Or just let it go again, I guess. But it just struck me.
Yeah, that is why, at that time, that's why I requested Karen write an opinion on it. And that's where this opinion came from.
Yeah, you know, I just kind of reread it and was looking at it again and went, hmm. So if everyone's happy with it, but it does.
In order to have overnight parking for residential, you'd think, yes, they would have to have their own parking.
Right. And according to this, they don't. They can buy out of it by paying for pileup space and then.
Right. But it's not, it's not overnight parking though.
Yeah, but that, going, they could say that, they wouldn't have a place to park overnight.
Right.
So yeah, I guess you're, somehow you gotta separate that.
It doesn't necessarily, it potentially means that they wouldn't have a place to park overnight. For instance, the place that needed one parking space, they already had two, I believe. So if each of their renters understood you have one overnight parking space, it was taken care of.
Okay.
But there is potential for exactly what you're saying. And can't park on the street overnight. There's many village parking lots where you cannot park overnight. There's wealth reasons for that. Maintenance, plowing, all the things. So, I don't know.
I guess I would support, really, if you want to, you know, separate them.
I think if you're gonna.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, if you're gonna, because think, like you said, grand scale, the bigger picture, what do we want our community to look like? Do we want? Do we want to have housing that people don't have their own parking spaces for? And they're they're parking in places they shouldn't or they're trying to find, or what does that look like for our community?
That's a tough, I mean, I guess I see both sides.
I know, and that's also where, I guess, that's also where I say, is that for us to decide for that developer? If he needs two per unit and tells each unit, you only actually get one overnight and he, and you cover what you need, just know if you park on the street overnight, you're getting ticketed over and over.
Right, I I agree, but I don't think we should allow, our verbiage should add a courage not having parking for residential. If you want to build residential, then parking is a responsibility you have.
Well, not only built, um, you could retro what's currently there.
Get legal's opinion.
I need a question first.
Shelley's question. Shelley, would you please?
Well, the question being, well, I'm not sure, Zach, but my proposal is, or my thought is, if someone's going to build residential, what do we want our town to look like? Do we want residential homes to have parking spaces?
Well, this is in the CBD.
Yes, yes, within the CBD, to have parking spaces where they're not parking overnight where they shouldn't be or finding other places to park and having to walk and you're right, the developer can build what he wants, but we can decide what's the value in our town? Is that gonna bring value to our town or is that gonna decrease value when you're trying to rent places that don't have parking? So, that's what I'm looking at, is the value, but can, I guess Zach's saying, what's the legal opinion on?
If you're encouraging one thing, if you're taking away the other.
Well, I'm still not sure, and I mean no disrespect, I'm still not sure there's a question there that requires an answer from a lawyer, but let me just jump in and say this. The broader question that you raise relates to all the parking in the central business district. And the village, the last few years, maybe a little bit longer, has kind of ridden or constructed a roller coaster with respect to that. You have in your ordinance so many spots, depending on either the size of the structure or the the type of business, and you have to have two spots for every five hundred square feet or whatever it might be, you have that schedule. And then you allow for, and I I I'm not making a value judgment here, the the village fathers and mothers allowed for, well, we know we're not gonna have enough parking for the use that, or the uses that might occur, so we'll establish this payment in lieu of parking. And at one time, the fee was rather significant, I'm not saying inappropriate, not my call, but it was ten thousand dollars a spot. That discouraged some people, maybe that was a good discouragement, not every businesses, or not every business functions well in the environment. And then you went to zero for the parking in lieu of, and then went to a hundred dollars, I think it might still be at a hundred, I'm not sure. But the point of that is, and again, I don't think this is a a legal question, it's, I I agree with you, Mrs. Rosso, how do you want the village to look? So you can do the Wild West approach where we charge nobody anything for any parking spaces, first come, first served. And whoever can attract the most customers or users, whether it's a retail outfit or some type of a of a service, first come and most popular wins, or you can ascribe a fee to it, knowing that the the fee that's paid, if it is paid, will be, those monies will be restricted to provide for hopefully new parking or better parking in the future. But those are really policy questions for you to decide. I mean, again, I I'm, I live in the village, I'm willing to give you my personal opinion, but you don't pay me for that. And so, I I I just don't think there's a a legal question there, I don't mean any disrespect, but you set the policy that you want and then it's up to your building inspector, your police department to enforce your policies.
Well, and I do recall, I can't off the top of my head, I don't remember, off-street parking allotment. There is a caveat in there, within three hundred to five hundred feet, if you can find parking for your need within that amount of space, you can count that towards your parking allotment. So we do all there, we do have even another mechanism in there for that.
So it's, I guess it's a question of, do we wanna set the parameters of what we want the village to be and look like and and what we can manage? Or the Wild West approach, like Mark's thought and.
Well, that's part of the management too, though, if you charge, you you, it it's a form of how you're gonna manage or deal with the parking. And I I think you can go to one extreme or the other, sometimes extremes are good, sometimes not. But there's certainly middle ground in there somewhere, but again, I believe those are policy considerations for the the council to make with respect to knowing that you have a well-defined and and it's not an infinite central business district, it is indeed well-defined and you don't have enough spaces that you personally, but the village doesn't have enough spaces curbside or next to a building to accommodate all the uses, so what do you do? Do you charge people? You try the paid parking and another policy decision and you you just have to, if you can, have at least four votes saying this is what we want the parking situation to be in the village.
I mean, our footprint is only so big, we only have so much to work with. We have to decide what we want and how we can be, we can't keep trying to sardine into the little tiny town that we are.
I think that if a builder wants wants to build some housing, like apartments above another building, then whatever parking spots he's allowed to have, that's it. He just can't build a whole bunch of apartments and say, well, good luck finding a place to park, shouldn't be our problem, we should just go by what they're allowed to have and that's it. So it should be the builders.
Yeah, cuz actually now that you mentioned that, the developer with the multifamily on Washington made sure that there were spaces. You know, I mean, he could've put in a whole nother unit and didn't because he wanted parking and even considered, is there one person or two person, cuz this is a two-bedroom and.
Yeah, they have their own parking spots.
Yeah. So, we can't solve the whole thing overnight, but in respect to Karen's comment about any use in the CBD, should we specify? It does not include residential.
Commercial.
Commercial use in the CBD. So it's just, would that one simple word change, Mr. Clark? Solve the concern on Ms. Kevlov's opinion on page one under section forty-six, the second paragraph starts any use in the CBD. So if we said commercial.
Uh, because I don't, uh, my my thought would be perhaps if you want to revise that to exclude the residential, or do you want it to include, I I I guess I'm struggling with which way you want this to go. You could stick, you could say any use in the CBD district, except, required to provide off-street parking, except residential or including residential, it depends on which way you want it to go.
We do not want to use the pileup for residential parking.
Except residential.
So then you can simply provide that the 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 pileup, residential's use in the CBD is not eligible for the pileup provisions of your ordinance.
Right.
I'm writing it down. Is that acceptable to everyone? Oh, I guess we would vote, but residential use in the CBD is not eligible for the pileup provision. So I make a motion, we include that in section forty-six dash three one four.
Support.
We have a motion by Rosso, support by Edwards. Do we want to adjust the language and bring it back?
I would recommend if you want me to make a textual change, that I reduce that to writing, bring it back and you look at it, I would not encourage an adoption or even a vote tonight.
Okay.
Okay. I will withdraw the motion until our village attorney brings it back next time.
Well, oh, no, I I'm sorry, I didn't mean that, you can make the motion, but I I just think before you formally adopt any amendment to the ordinance, I I didn't, I I didn't mean to pull the rug out from under you, I apologize for that.
Make the motion to make Mr. Clark write, right, let's do that.
Yeah. Okay, and I don't withdraw my motion.
Okay, we'll still stick with Rosso and Edwards. Do we have any more discussion? Hearing none, could you please call the vote? And would you email me your edit?
Ross?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Partholomew?
Yes.
President Posnansky?
Yes. So we will see that again next month for final. Moving on to our, now our new business, our sanitary wastewater capital improvement project. This goes along with the presentation we saw earlier, we do have it divided up. All of this is detailed in our two-hundred-page CIP, this didn't come out of nowhere. So, just so that the council sees it, this is the intention of that money from that CIP, we pulled the most pertinent. We will be focusing on this, these monies on these items. This does include the engineering costs and just looking for council approval here as we move forward.
You wanna approve of both at the same time?
If you would like to, or, I mean, it's up to us. I put them on separately just in case so that everybody could see them. Didn't feel like it was shoving both, you know, in one that you all had opinion and say.
I guess I'd make a motion to approve new business A and B, which is the sanitary wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project and the water capital improvement project.
Support.
Okay, I have motion by Edwards, support by Care. Putting A and B into one approved motion. Do we have discussion?
I I have a question for Al. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone so everyone can hear your answer.
Lines are up fourteen, nothing, in case anyone's interested.
Thanks.
Sound record.
And it's just more so for my clarification or reminder.
Do you have, no, I don't think he's looking at it.
Okay, so just for my clarification or reminder, cuz it seems like we're always talking about grinders and augers. And I feel like it's it's, um, we hear about the augers a lot.
We have a lot of them, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, right, so under number five, we're replacing grinders and augers? Is that all of them or just some or do you know?
I think that is just on the headworks, the, uh, the, uh, we've got a grinder and then an auger after that to remove everything that's been ground down into a receptacle. And it gets stuff into small pieces and it removes quite a bit of it, but it is, it is, thank you. It it's a, it's a bit of a pain and it has to be rebuilt constantly, the grinders take take quite a beating, so we're talking about replacing that. There's a lot of debris that comes in. There's a lot of, we've talked about it before, the the wipes and the.
Yeah.
We've had all kinds, I've had pieces of two-by-four come in, I've had mop pads, I don't know how they get in there, but I've had all kinds of things come in, so.
Okay, so we won't have grinding equipment?
What's that?
We won't have new grinding equipment?
We, that's on the list, is the new grinding equipment, yes.
It says the new screening will not include.
Replace the screening.
So we we would get rid of the grinder and put in the screen?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right, that's what I was, okay, perfect, thank you, I just was curious about that one.
Anything else?
Just one, probably for HRC, not specifically, thanks, Al. Um, but one proposal has a ten percent fee and the other one has a seven percent fee. If you could explain the difference between the two?
Yeah, that was based on, you know, our our perceived complexity and the number of hours we think it's gonna do to each of them. We didn't wanna say ten percent for both of them, so we we adjusted one down to that seven percent value.
For complexity, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any more discussion? Okay, with that, we have a motion to accept both the sanitary wastewater and the water capital improvement projects, could you please call the roll?
Care?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Rosso?
Yes.
Partholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
President Posnansky?
Yes. Look at us doing things. It's exciting. Okay, with that, uh, I'm sorry, finish.
Yeah, no, that's good.
With that, that, thank you guys very much. We moved, um, lastly, I had the notice of intent, which would have been no use if we didn't pass these, so we have our notice of intent now to go forward to get the money with the bond. I have in here our letter. Speaks to what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it. We have our bond counsel here, which is different than our general legal counsel, we have Mr. Rigau. Do we have any discussion regarding the item, any questions, how this works? You even have your resolution here, we'll post it, we will do all the things. Hearing none, do we have a motion? Or rather, a resolution of our notice of intent to sell bonds?
I make a motion that we accept the notice of intent resolution as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Rosso and support by Edwards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could you please call the roll?
Yeah. Sorry, give me one second, I was trying to get ahead of everything and fill out the resolution. All right, Edwards?
Yes.
Partholomew?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Rosso?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
President Posnansky?
Yes. Okay. Awesome, moving into our Romeo Historical Society charity gaming license. Clark Lucero, I'll let you speak to this one, this was a request that came in and you spoke directly with them.
Yeah, so, uh, I guess as a five oh one C three, they they've already done one raffle and if they wanna do more raffles, they have to get a license from Michigan Lottery, so the Michigan Lottery provided the resolution paperwork and the village just has to acknowledge the Romeo Historical Society as a registered nonprofit with its, within its bounds. and the village just has to acknowledge the Romeo Historical Society as a registered nonprofit within its bounds. So, that's really it. And I provided the IRS determination letter showing that it's a 501(c)(3) as well as the state registry as well that shows it is a nonprofit within the state. So, essentially, for them to get it, this body just needs to create a resolution acknowledging them and then they can go back and get their gaming license to raffle off some baskets during the home tour during Christmas.
Okay, so with that?
Oh, I'm sorry, does that give them, like, then they can do it from then on, they don't have to come forward every time?
I believe so, I believe so, they can, they can do it from here on out. It's just a one-time where the village is acknowledging, yes, you're within our village, you are a 501. And then, if there's any other problems, I'm sure the Michigan Lottery will reach out to me.
So, do we have a motion?
Motion to...
Or a resolution, rather?
Motion to allow the charitable gaming license for the historical society.
We have a motion by Bartholomew.
Second.
Support by Fowler, any further discussion?
Is that the right phrasing of it, or is that fine?
To recognize them, but it's fine, I have all the paperwork, I'll, I'll, I would just ask, yeah, that you rephrase that, trustee Bartholomew, to recognize them.
Yes, we recognize that.
I still support.
Okay. We go with all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have none opposed. Moving into our grant writer proposal. Again, I will allow Clerk Lucero to take this one, this is...
So, a number of months ago, I had informed the board that we had found a grant writer that fits within the budget that was approved during budget season. We just had to go back and forth with some things between the attorneys to get the verbiage right within the scope of work and contracts. But, I interviewed six, six individuals for grant writing position and with the intention of bringing some to this board. The problem is, is that of the six, three came out as solid candidates. Only two of them, or two of them were actually looking for a more permanent position. So, it kind of narrowed it down to actually one. Luckily, the one it narrowed it down to was an amazing candidate. They are the head of grant writing for a number of organizations. For Kent County, they handle all of bonding and everything else there. Extremely, extremely knowledgeable when it comes to grants and eager to start with the village. Now, they agreed to take a less monthly fee than what they're used to. They want to, they see it as an opportunity to kind of hang their hat and say, yeah, this, this community really needed it. So, it's, it's best of both worlds. I think we get someone that's pretty much in the state of Michigan, kind of wrote the book. And I have reached out to counterparts, other clerks in the areas that they have worked in and they come highly, highly regarded. So, like I said, I don't have three to give you guys because there just aren't three out there right now. There just isn't.
I was just waiting to pull my best Justin Parker on you.
I mean, I went back and forth with Mr. Clark, I was like, could we consider this a single source? He's like, no, but it's an argument I guess you can make. And I'm like, there just isn't anybody else right now. Like I said, they wanted, the other two, really, really good. But, I mean, the village just isn't in the position to offer full-time employment to someone. I mean, I would love to get to that point, but we just, we can't offer full-time employment for someone as a grant writers and this person is...
I'll make a motion that we accept the grant writer.
You mentioned a monthly fee, only for when we're using these people?
No, it is a contract, it is a monthly fee and they are working...
It's forty hours a month, according to the letter.
They are working forty hours a month for us.
So, because I saw the same thing, there's no out to this, it doesn't say like thirty-day notice by either...
It does, it does.
It does.
I apologize, I heard a motion thrown out somewhere.
Yes, motion to accept grant, this grant writer proposal as presented.
I have a motion.
I did not hear that, so.
By Bartholomew, support by Edwards, continue with discussion.
Now we can have discussion.
There we go.
So, where did I miss the terms of the agreement?
It's in there, it's something of sixty days because Mr. Clark and I both saw it. Or maybe that was on the contract that we were going back and forth.
I see, I think this is different than the contract, this is the proposal.
There is a sixty-day-out clause. This is, this is the scope of work, it's not the full, yeah.
Okay, and then, what about achieved results? Like, I know no one can promise anything, but is, do we just, is there some kind of measurement?
So, they are, they are reporting to my office, we are weekly reporting and then collaboratively working with all of the department heads and everything. So, there is reporting as to tracking, everything else, what they're doing. And if it's deemed that it's just not going well, that's that sixty-day-out that's in that contract that we can sit here and say, hey, within sixty days, I think we're gonna, we're gonna start to walk it back. Then again, I would advise this board to consider the fact that grant writing is not quick at all. I mean, look at, look at chief, how long has that generator been going on?
There's potential, it just depends on what grant you're going after and what it is. I mean, there's been potential where, I've done some short, quick ones, the tree board really wasn't too lengthy.
Yeah, we got the tech one.
But again, I feel like we've already, we've scratched the surface that we can with the hours and the ability that we have. This person, the intention is heavy lifting. Definitely, the, I'm looking at this person going, well, I've already got three hundred and sixty, I'm looking at you and I want millions.
Right, so you guys will make sure...
Which will take a lot of tracking, which takes a lot of, that package that to submit is going to take a lot of hours.
Yeah, grant writing is, it is a, I mean, lack of a better term, is a burden, like, it is a full-time job. And not only to track where you're at in the process, but once you get it and the reporting on that, that's a full-time job too, like, looking at all the inner workings and, I mean, just, just the small grants that we've been able to get, the reporting on the tech end on some of the grants that I got is, is full-time, what they want.
Every time something comes in, we're trying, okay, this one is, the different grants and the different ways that they are tracked or reimbursed, or, okay, this one's only at a certain percent. That will be where they're fully engaged.
So, you feel there's stopgaps in place, that you'll be in contact with them enough to know that things are moving along?
Okay, I believe we will see.
Thank you.
But again, like you said, there's no guarantee, I mean, we've done, I just did the large, you know, we went to the governor and asked for, or not the governor, I apologize, to our representative Lisa McLean and put a package together and we didn't get it. So, I mean, there's always the potential, but even then, we could see that that was a viable grant, hours were spent, the tribe was there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. We do have a motion, do we have any more discussion? Okay, with that, could you please call the roll?
Just, just for clarity, because I didn't, who was the motion by?
We have a motion by Bartholomew with support by Edwards.
Got it, okay. Care?
Yes.
Rosso?
Yes.
Fowler?
No.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
President Posnansky?
Yes. Okay, moving into our prohibition of our short-term rental. The planning commission had discussed this, I had brought it to the planning commission quite a while ago, asked them to look at it before we have an issue. Many other communities are more of a destination vacation and they have presented, I went to a planning seminar, and the nightmare that they speak of after the fact. So, I was coming to our planning commission asking them, let's address this before we end up with a problem. So, in their discussion, they have proposed to us that we prohibit the short-term rentals. The verbiage that they have approved would be, short-term rentals are prohibited in all zoning districts. A short-term rental is identified as a dwelling or part or portion thereof that is available to accommodate the lodging of guests paying a fee, charge, or other compensation for a period of twenty-eight or fewer consecutive days and nights at a time. This includes tourist homes, vacation rentals, Airbnb, verbos, and the like, while excluding bed and breakfast establishments as regulated in sections forty-six dash, there's a couple in our ordinance. So, that has been the recommendation by the planning commission. I did additionally put in here, the only, my concern is the planning commission, while they did pass this up to us, it was not with a full approval of their commission, is that a requirement? Absolutely not. But it's just something to note that the full board wasn't there and even of the board that was there, there were still a few that did not approve of it. Just something to consider in moving forward. There were a few people that did stand at that meeting that asked for it not to go into effect. There were people that stood and asked for it to go into effect, so it's either way.
Are there any active in Romeo right now?
I do believe so.
Yeah, there's a number of them. One of the people that stood up, Mr. Tyler Bryner, and he represented him and Greg Tarr. They have, I think they said four or five. I could, I could be off on that number, so please don't, but we do have them, so, yes.
So, of the nine members, four approved it, because there was, that was still a majority at that meeting, was approved by Grandstaff, Webb, Minton, and Hall.
Approved for what?
To, to give, to, for this language, to prohibit them.
To prohibit them.
Yes. They did do, I also have in here, they had their public hearing, they've done all the things, so that we can see that.
I'm sorry, for clarity, because I didn't see, there was more notes, nine rentals by Mr. Bryner.
Legally, Mr. Clark, if I could ask a legal question, going forward, should we move to prohibit? Would that just stop the current rentals?
No, but by definition, they're short-term. And so, if somebody's there now for four days or less than twenty-eight days consecutively, they can stay. But once the ordinance goes into effect, you can't re-up it. So, are you going to dispossess people in the next few days or weeks? Probably not. But, they, even if somebody has booked in advance, I think this would still, if it's adopted, would still prohibit the use going forward in the manner that's prohibited. The other thing, and it's not clear to me from reading the minutes of the planning commission, but if you're going to amend, and I should have addressed this, the other one with the pilot for the residential and the CBD, typically, when you have amendments to your zoning ordinance, there should be a public hearing so that people can come and speak. Now, I don't think you need to double up on the public hearing, but if there wasn't one at the planning commission, I think it would behoove this council to have a public hearing.
Well, that's why I put in here, there was a notice of public hearing on proposed ordinance regarding the short-term rental.
Okay, and so...
That was done on February sixth.
Okay. But then, as I mentioned, I got out a little far over my skis, I guess, on the pilot. I don't know if the planning commission has had, have they had a public hearing on the amendment to that? Because that's part of the zoning ordinance as well, if I'm not mistaken.
No, as far as I'm aware, that was just a discussion here and now with the decision.
So, then, my thought would be, because you want me to draft that language anyway, I can have that for next month and I would recommend that you have a public hearing on that language to take the residential out of the pilot program. So, you won't lose any time on it, but you will have afforded...
As I say, and we would hold that public hearing though at the planning commission?
You can do it at the planning commission or you can do it here.
I'll just do it here because we're making the decision.
Right.
Because I don't know that we would have enough time to publish it within the amount of time for it.
Yeah, I don't think you need to send it back or even if it didn't come initially from the planning commission, you can have the public hearing here.
And if I could continue a bit, I had discussed with Mr. Clark at one point with this is, okay, so we have this ordinance, we say this goes and we prohibit it. What is our regulations for it? What is our, what are we going to do when we find one?
Well, you have a choice, you can make it a misdemeanor, which means that it's a crime. Under the law governing villages and local municipalities, maximum penalty is ninety days in jail, a five-hundred-dollar fine plus costs. I doubt that a judge is going to be inclined to put anybody in jail for violating, but you do need to have or provide for an enforcement mechanism. And sometimes, the attempt to enforce is not met with great enthusiasm by the property owner, which is fine. But you may need, whoever the enforcing person or entity in the village is going to be, you may need to apply to the district court in Romeo or the forty-second district court, it's not physically in Romeo, but for a search warrant, maybe as part of enforcement. The other choice you have, which you don't have to decide tonight, but you could make a violation a civil infraction and that is more like a traffic ticket, you are in fact given a ticket. There are no criminal penalties attendant to it, only fines and costs. You can make multiple violations of greater fines, you can have kind of a progressive enforcement approach to it. So, that's something that I think is important for consideration is, all right, if we're going to prevent it, then how does the, how does the village enforce its ordinance? As you've experienced, some ordinances are more difficult for enforcement than others.
How would this affect the Romeo motel?
Well, I don't think it would, because I don't think, the way that's written here, if I'm looking at the right item, I don't think the motel, well, by definition, it's a, a short-term rental. I guess, and I don't mean to answer your question with a question, I'm assuming that the area where the Romeo motel is, is zoned residential?
I would assume that, that is an assumption, but I...
And so, if that's the case, I think that you wouldn't be able to enforce it retroactively against the Romeo motel. I think it would be, the commonly used term is grandfathered in, so that it would be exempt from violation.
Wouldn't these other businesses be grandfathered in then too?
Well, it depends, I don't know what else...
For Greg Tars and who... With Greg Tarr's and who, someone else's business?
Tyler Briner.
Tyler Briner.
I think motels fall under their own set of rules and stuff, though, I think, I'm not sure.
Don't think, well, this doesn't talk about anything different.
And I think that's an excellent point. I think you should consider whether to specifically exclude motels or other similar types of uses that, I suppose there's a, well, it's hard for me to imagine where another motel would go in the village, but I guess that could happen.
I feel like we have some language adjusting and enforcement to add.
Motion to propose, or motion to postpone?
I'd support that.
We have a motion by Bartholomew, support by Edwards, to postpone. We'll adjust some language. And put in enforcement.
Put in a public hearing as well?
Mm-hmm, by next month.
Do you want it by next month, or do you want it?
Pardon me?
There wasn't a second one after February, I'm sure. For the public hearing.
I thought they were, February sixth or something.
There wouldn't need to be a second one.
Because there was one February sixth.
Oh, we're talking two different, we're talking PILOP, and we're talking current, the one, this one doesn't need the, sorry. That has to do with the PILOP.
Okay.
Any further discussions? Okay, postponing, motion by Bartholomew, support by Edwards, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any opposed? We have none opposed. We'll bring that back next month. Next, we have an ordinance update. This was brought to me from Al. There is language that is required from Eagle. Apparently, we thought we did it back before I was in this seat. And once Eagle said, oh, well, yeah, show us those minutes, it really wasn't done. So here we are, we continue to act in the way and follow these rules, but we had not approved it and done an ordinance update. So the language is in red, which will be added to the current ordinance. Do we have a motion to amend the ordinance with the language update?
Motion?
Go ahead.
Motion to amend the ordinance update, fifteen dash one seventy-one.
Support.
Motion by Bartholomew, support by Edwards. Do we have any discussion?
I, I just have a question. Under D, four D, it talks about you can't engage in activities that will result in excessive quantities of pollutants, and it gives the examples. Debris, concrete washing, de-icing, fertilizers, yard waste, commercial or light industrial waste. So does that mean then, I don't know if Al would know, or who would know. If, in, in the CBD, if they're throwing water down drains from businesses, or into streets from businesses, would that be considered part of this?
Is it stormwater?
Yeah.
It's in there, back page.
I'm sure any stormwater could be a system.
Well, it says, it applies to any activities which affect the quantity or quality of a private or stormwater system. So I guess what I'm getting at is if you rinse things down your driveway, down into the street, that's not included in here.
Right, normal, normal stuff, the household stuff.
Wash your car.
Little grass, something like that, but that's not an issue, but we're worried about real contaminants.
Okay. Excessive quantities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion, pardon me, by Bartholomew, support by Edwards. Go ahead and call the roll.
Fowler?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Rosso?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
President Posnansky?
Yes. Okay, we postponed the next item, so moving into our joint parking task force. This was a request from our joint DDA and council meeting. I unfortunately was not well that day, so I did not attend it, so I don't know Nolan, or, sorry.
How was there?
Trustee Edwards or Bartholomew could, we do have the minutes, but if you could elaborate on what it is we're looking for from our commit, from the council.
I think we're just looking for someone to collaborate with the DDA, much the way Nolan probably did the first time. And just work together as part of like the, the meetings we've been having. And nothing specific at this point in time, just kind of like.
Brainstorming.
Brainstorming, yeah, good term.
Yeah, I mean, it was. It was requested by the DDA that we do this, and a, and a big portion of it was hopefully comprising it of not just village council and DDA members, but, but maybe hopefully a couple of residents, which is why it would just be a, a task force. You know, a couple of things that, that we, not to get too deep on it, but generically just finding some, some different parking considerations or solutions within the DDA district. Trying to troubleshoot and brainstorm some ways to maybe maintain some of these lots. And just looking at alternate exploration or alternative solutions for keeping the dialogue open between the two boards. I think that's really helpful. I know the next topic is going to be the next joint meeting that we want to have, but these meetings have been really good. You know, but it's also a little difficult, you know, scheduling them a month and a half apart from each other to make a whole lot of good progress. I think it'd be nice to have a smaller group that's maybe a little more focus-driven, explore some of these options.
So Nolan, do you think, or, or anybody, really, that you, because you were there. I keep waiting for the wayfinding, the signs, to see what impact that will make.
Yeah.
And does anyone else think that maybe, once we get that in place, we should see what impact that makes, and then know what we're dealing with from there?
Yeah, to a degree, but I don't think we have to wait for that to be completed to start the dialogue on, on certain solutions. Kay, Kay had some really good presentation on it. And there's a lot of really exciting stuff on their website as well about what they're working towards. I don't think we have, we, I don't think we should avoid doing things concurrently, but you're right, yeah, I mean, before we enact anything or, or exploit it beyond, you know, just the discussion level, we should see how the wayfinding is working and maybe we can improve it.
And currently, the DDA doesn't have money to follow that program out. They are also looking for their own grants. So there is not a deadline, deadline, a timeline to that.
But we did talk about that, Chuck.
We did.
We did much for talking about that.
It's been on the table a long time. Okay.
So is there anyone on the council that would want to join a task force?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
I volunteered also. Well, at the, at that meeting, I raised my hand.
I did too, but I didn't know if they wrote me down or not.
So yes, there's, there's enthusiasm here.
Do all three of you want to be on it? I mean, three is not a quorum, and that's fine, okay?
I guess, would we just need village approval to make it a task force so that we can maybe include some residents on it as well?
I don't have my rules of procedure where we speak to task force. Do you, can you pull it up?
And then, when that happens, are the, are they picked jointly with the DDA, or would we select those residents based on them coming to us and asking to sit on it? Or am I asking questions that we're having Jamie look up right now?
I thought Betty wanted to be on it. She was there at the meeting.
Yeah.
I forget her last name.
Cassidy.
Yes, Cassidy. Just one person who's a resident.
I see it's all the way at the end, it's one of the last pages.
It's committees, this task force is maybe established by a resolution of the council that specifies the task to be completed and the date of its dissolution. Yeah, well, that is at the end, you're right.
That's it?
Members of such committees must be residents of the village, recommended for appointment by the village president, and confirmed by a majority vote of the council. Vacancies will be filled by a majority vote of the village council the same way appointments are made.
Okay, so if we want to make a resolution to go forward with our current council members, we could do that at this time, or we could wait and do it all at one time? Next month, I could get letters of interest, and then do it all at one time?
That sounds good.
I think that's appropriate, yeah, especially if we pass that next village DDA meeting date, we can sit with them too, before our next meeting, and, and drum up that interest from residents to make sure that they, you know, submit their letters.
Okay, so we will postpone that, the creation of it till next month?
But people were enthusiastic about looking at it. They really were.
Then next is the next joint meeting. I have that in here, is Monday, November tenth at seven PM. It's here more of a just, hey, as a heads up, I'll do like I have done, send out an agenda with a.
Already on my calendar.
Before, so that we're all here and have that in our heads. Our next item was our Pacer rating. Again, that's also kind of in here just for information. If you remember, I applied for a small grant from SEMCOG to update our Pacer ratings. I can't recall if it's every two to three years, I feel like it was three. Ours was needed. It looks pretty much like we would predict. All of the new roads are new, and the ones that aren't done are critical and need to be done. So do you have any discussion regarding that or questions?
Pretty much what I expected.
Okay, so I just wanted to get that before you, that was completed. And then we move into our last two. We have two event permits. One I filled out on the village's behalf. Nobody ever takes ownership of the downtown merchant trick-or-treating. So in order for safety, the last few years, a handful of years, rather, we've been closing down the street. It has grown exponentially. So that is the first request, and then the second is to continue it with the Witches and Warlocks. This was requested by MJC Marketplace, Ms. Kathy. She has provided her insurance in all of the items.
Should we do them individually?
Yeah, I put them on here so that we could, yep, I'm just speaking.
Okay.
So the trick-or-treat event, I, I know it's Newbury to Washington, is it also the roads headed east and west?
Well, kind of what we do are, in Kevin coming in, is we kind, we so you don't bottleneck it, they do get shut off a little bit before there, so, but not much further, other than just helping so that there's no, someone doesn't come that way and bottleneck into, and then have nowhere to turn around. So they tend to park their cars at Rawls, and then at the gas station, so that they can still get in and out of Four Corners, or into the gas station. So it's not a full street, it's just enough to make sure that the flow of traffic is.
Nathan, did you make a motion?
Yeah, my, a motion for, to approve the downtown trick-or-treat permit, event permit. Support.
Okay, I have a motion by Bartholomew, support by Care. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the downtown trick-or-treat event?
Aye.
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 Do we have any opposed? We have none opposed. And then the Witches and Warlocks, continuing the closure, one to five.
Make a motion that we approve the event permit for the Witches and Warlock.
Motion by Fowler?
Support. Nathan?
Okay, support by Bartholomew. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have none opposed. Moving into our final public comment. Three minutes, anybody would like to speak?
Hello again, Sharon Smith, three seventy-seven North Main. I would love to volunteer for the task force. I have probably submitted, I don't know, at least three applications for the DDA when there were seats open. I'm passionate about our downtown. Our downtown health is what keeps our housing prices looking good, and my house is an investment for me, you know? I'm hoping when I have to buy a condo, when I'm eighty-five, I'll get a good return on that investment. So again, I'm passionate about the downtown and, and doing what's right for the village, and what our business is and whatnot. So if I need to submit something in writing for the task force, I will, but please, I'm throwing my hat in the ring, so I'd love to be on that. Thank you.
Did you say that you already have letters in, or?
I've, over the years, I've probably submitted at least three applications for openings on the DDA, but, yeah.
She was at the last meeting too, Jack.
Just for clarification, would you want people to send you letters in the meantime?
Yes, because then I get, I said I did, and then I don't, like.
Right.
Yes, so in writing is appropriate.
You don't have a form too, do you?
Yes, we do. That's what we have at the village. Filling out the form is not a requirement, though.
Okay.
So a letter's sufficient.
Okay, I just have something real quick to say regarding the, oh, sorry, Marty Hutnick, two-three-one St. Clair Street, Four Corners Diner. In regards to the short-term lease rentals. So I texted while we're sitting here, I sent a message to a friend of mine in Mount, in the Macomb County, right? And I said to him, what are your thoughts on short-term rental and human trafficking? Is there a connection? And he said, oh my God, yes, Marty, there is a connection between short-term rentals and human trafficking. Traffickers exploit the features of short-term rental platforms, such as an ease of access and temporary ways to, oh my God, I can't even see this, facilitate their operations. Compared to hotels which often require interaction with staff, short-term rentals can provide traffickers with more, can provide traffickers making it easier for them to go unnoticed. In some cases, renters may avoid direct contact with hosts to use anomalous payment methods like prepaid cards to avoid detection. While the hotel industry has been proactive in implementing anti-trafficking training for employees, the short-term rental market has historically had less oversight. This gap allows traffickers to operate with a reduced risk of being identified and reported. And he sent me some other things as well, but then he goes on to tell me about the most recent arrest was in Shelby Township, where they arrested seven people that had rented a short-term lease. And the, the people that they arrested went as far as East Point to rent this house. And they, there were seven of them. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Motion to adjourn?
And a motion by Fowler? Support? We'll say support by Rosso, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed?